That's for information. And member lessons.
Thank you. This is a follow up from the Finance Committee Conversation on the 31st. We briefly had a chance to discuss a memo from Legislative Finance. And it occurred to me after the meeting ended that the figure shared in that memo updates the B S, calculates what the BSA would be if it were adjusted for inflation between FY 11 and FY 25. However, when ASD has presented its structural deficit to the board, we're already projecting forward to FY 26. So I wondered if it would be possible before the AASB meeting, which sort of comes up this week, if there's a way to essentially adjust that Legislative Finance figure for what projected rates of inflation might be through for FY 26. Does that make sense?
So member lessons, are you asking to adjust the BSA number we previously presented, replace it with 1800?
Well, essentially take, adjust that Legislative Finance figure for our projections for inflation for FY 26, because it currently ends in FY 25.
Okay, are you tracking that, Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah, that would be easy enough to do. We typically have done that based on like 2% historical inflation. So we just add 2%.
Figured it's a simple calculation, but if we could formally receive that by like Thursday morning, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
We've been joined online by Member Wilson and Member Higgins is here in person as is Member Donnelly. So we're, we're about there. Other requests for information. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a quick question for Dr. Bryant, then assuming I'm correct, an RFI. Is the Title VI Indigenous Education Director position still vacant?
Mr. Lang or Mr. Gustafson?
Yes, Member Jacobs, that position is still vacant. Is it actually a joint position? It's the Director of Indigenous Education and Migrant Education. We have not found somebody yet for that. We continue to interview.
And then I guess an RFI, then hopefully pretty simple and Board Connect. I think the question ultimately is, have we considered modifying the job description to maybe reduce barriers and increase the number of applicants that we're interviewing? And then specifically, are we connecting with tribal organizations, tribal health organizations regarding someone who might be willing to step into that space? Thanks.
Sure, we can provide an update on Friday. Mr. Gustafson, track on that, right?
Thank you. Any other requests from Board members? And Member Higgins.
Said Jacobs. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess I'm interested if there's any information showing the effectiveness of the remote learning. Because in some cases, I think at the high grades, I'm hearing positive, the lower level, it's, you know, remote learning is no learning in some cases with, with it because the engagement needs to be a lot more for parents and the location and all that. Do we have anything showing how we're doing with that and anything we can do to improve it or any options out there?
Member Higgins, I'm happy to put some thought into that. Essentially, the best data point would be some qualitative information that we gather via a survey. There are just so many different classroom to classroom ways that we go about remote learning. So there's no rigorous statistically, you know, significant way that I could provide information. The best I could do would be something more qualitative based off of feedback. But I'd like my team to chime in to see if there's anything I'm missing and give you an update next Board Connect.
Okay, I appreciate it. I know it's a difficult one to address. I'm just, just if there's something we can do to support it, improving it, making it so it's more effective, that would be something I'd be interested in.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from Board members? Seeing, hearing none, we will move on to Section C of the agenda. And first up is our audit financials.
Right. Thank you. So I'm going to turn this over to our external auditor through BDO. This is Mr. James Doughty. He is our partner, I guess, for the auditor. Let him introduce himself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is James Doughty. I'm an auditor principal with BDO USA, your external auditor. Been your auditor for many years now, graduated from Diamond High School, saw the hat. And yes, we did win football this year. So that was nice to see. So today I'd like to walk through the auto wrap up document. That's a required communication between the auditor and those charged with governance, which is the school board. If at any time throughout the presentation you have a question, please just let me know. So this first page right here is just lets you know that professional standards require us to communicate this in writing. We were engaged to audit your financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024. We previously sent in audit planning document on July 30th, 2024. That was our plan for the year end audit. So since we're out, we have substantially completed our audit over the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024. The objective was to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance about whether those financial statements are free from material misstatement. Happy to say that we've been able to execute on those audits. We expect to issue an unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion on the financial statements. We issued several opinions, one on your ACFR, one on your state single audit, federal single audit, government auditing standards, and then a few other supplemental reports. And all of those, we expect to issue an unmodified opinion. We're still working towards finalizing those. We're looking to issue, you know, around November 14th, November 15th. Make sure that you are in compliance with the deadline at the state. I just want to point out that all records and information requested by BDO were freely available for our inspection. We feel that we got great access to all the information, all the individuals throughout your, throughout your organization. And management's cooperation was excellent. We have a portal that we keep online. Andy and Aurora spearhead that and manage all those requests and to make sure that they get to the right people. We get the documents and we're able to conduct a efficient and effective audit. So just want to say thank you to your team for the support during the audit. So results of the audit, as a part of the audit, we review your accounting practices, policies and estimates. There was no new accounting policies this year. Gatsby didn't give you anything fun to adopt this year. So your accounting policies remain the same as they were in the prior year. There are a couple of significant accounting estimates. Estimates are always a part of the financial statements. There's just certain numbers that you don't know for sure. And so you need to make your best guess. So that is the incurred but not reported claims for self insurance, your IBNR, and then pension and OPEB for the pension liability. Management did not make any changes to how those estimates are developed. For the pension and OPEB, you actually don't develop that estimate. There's a separate audit done of the plan and you're told what your proportional share is of that. And you go ahead and recognize the corresponding liability or asset that is left unfunded or funded for each one of those plans. So as a part of the audit, we're looking for any corrected or uncorrected misstatements. This year, there was a corrected misstatement. It was related to state grant revenue that we brought to the attention of management. Management has subsequently reported that transaction. And so that is reflected now in the financial statements for Fund III as well as the government wide. There was also an uncorrected misstatement. So the, the capital grant that I'm referencing was actually received in fiscal year 2023 and could have been recognized as revenue in 2023. However, those grant awards were not passed from facilities to the finance department. So they didn't know that those agreements existed. So the adjustment was not made. As far as the uncorrected misstatement, we concur with management that the effects of not correcting those in FY 23 is not material and does not really change overall what the financial statements say and issue. So internal control or financial reporting, we do have to gain an understanding of your internal controls so we can properly plan and perform the audit. As a part of that, we're looking for material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. So except for the adjustment as it related to the capital grants, there was no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that we identified. However, on the next page, there is a material weakness related to the revenue recognition for the state capital grants. Whenever we come in and, and identify a deficiency, we have to evaluate what's the, what's the source of this? What's the cause? How big could that be? So there was a deficiency. We recommended, you know, the facilities and finance work together to make sure that all new grant awards are passed along to the finance folks. So those can be recognized in accordance with GAAP. We believe that's a fairly easy change to make and update. This really is isolated just to one, one small portion. So when you consider the volume of transactions that go through Anchorage School District, you know, this is a small portion that is the capital grants. And we believe that management has a way of addressing this. So this should not be a repeat finding going forward. Additional required communications, these are areas that we need to specifically respond to, just in accordance with the auditing standards. So there is no significant changes to our planned audit strategy, no consultations with other accountants. Other than the material weakness, there was no significant findings, no disagreements with management, no significant difficulties. And then lastly, just want to reaffirm that myself, the engagement team, we are independent of the school district. And that's what allows us to be your independent auditor. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Seeing no questions. I believe we have no questions.
All right. Well, that concludes my presentation and.
Sorry, Member Higgins?
Well, I just had one. I know that the issue of the sports funds, that those funds have been an issue in the past. And I know we kind of blocked it. You used to have to meet with every principal when they had a problem, got overboard, then they called back, and then we had a major problem with, with a criminal type issue. But are those issues really smoothed out now? Is everything's running smoothly with that? Or is that still an ongoing issue?
I can answer that. And that was related to when we had student activities as a decentralized. So every school had their own checking account that they had to reconcile. So we had an auditor and it wasn't, it wasn't BDO that audited that. It's actually, I believe, Altman Rogers that did those audits. So what they would do is come in and audit those accounts. We'd have findings and we'd call in all the principals and do it. But several years ago, probably seven or eight, we pulled in the, those checking accounts. We got rid of those and pulled all those dollars into our internal business plus system. So no, those are all part of our general accounting procedures, going through the exact same review, everything else is going through. So we really haven't had any of the management or the issues that we did in the past, once we got those all pulled internal.
And a follow up to that different one, on the, on the issue of charter schools, we've had two charter schools with some pretty big financial issues that had been going, ongoing for issues in the way it was funded through PTA, then came back, we had others with the reserves. Are those looked at very carefully? The charter school finances, just as much as the city, just as much as the Anchorage School District?
Oh yeah, those will be looked at proportional because they're all internal on our accounts as well. So as the orders pull random samples of these accounts, they're going to hit charter schools in proportion to other schools based on number of transactions essentially.
Any other questions? If not, I think we're completely, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. We still plan to issue next Thursday or Friday. So if you have any questions between now and then, please just reach out to Andy and we'll get you a response. Thank you for your time.
Right. Okay, without, we'll go ahead and transition to our next topic, which will be an update to the board on our rightsizing initiative. Before they get started, I think it would be prudent of me to just share a few words on where we're at and how we got to this point. So our community was made aware late last week on Friday about the list of schools that have been identified for the rightsizing plan. And these days have surely been difficult and emotional for all of our, all of our communities that have been directly impacted by this plan. And I know that we have a long road ahead of gathering feedback and listening from the community. And I know that we may be gathering various responses, some of which can be particularly sad, emotional. And these are completely normal and understandable responses to news of this nature. With that said, I do want to recap what I shared last week with the media that I do feel a strong sense of urgency to continue this conversation. And one of the reasons is that though every single building represents the heartbeat of its particular neighborhood, I, I do see some of the writing on the walls when it comes to our enrollment. Just this morning, I was looking at the number of kindergarteners that ASD had back in 1995. And it was close to 1,000 more kindergartners back then than we have today. So what that means is that even though even today, if we feel that our neighborhood school is meeting our needs of today, I see us being in this for the next 10 years unless something extraordinary happens within our community. So as difficult as it is for me to move this conversation forward, I can't for the next 10 years allow the education of our students to continually be decreased in levels of service due to flatten roll or flat funding trends, decreasing enrollment trends and other factors. This is really an opportunity to add resources despite those headwinds. And I can't say how this process will end up in a couple of months. But I do believe it's prudent and critical for us to have it for the sake of our students who are not aware what the, the PTR was back in 1995 or unaware of what this could mean for their, their education if these trends continue for the next decade. So again, I feel an incredible sense of urgency to do something now within our control. Because again, school funding for the public's perspective is not managed by the superintendent or the school board. School funding is under the prerogative of the state legislature. And we've been disappointed for over a decade and our students don't have another decade to have wasted. That's why I'm approaching this topic with a sense of urgency. But with that said, I do want our technical experts to share how we got here. What does this plan mean? And how did we come to the schools that were selected? And what are some of the broader trends? So I'll go ahead and hand it off to Jim Anderson and our team to, to walk through the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, and good afternoon, school board. The slide. So the overall goal of rightsizing, and we've been discussing this since April, is to provide the best possible education levels of service with the resources that we have. I think everyone on the board recognizes that there has not been a successful effort at state level to continue inflation-proofing education funding. And frankly, we have less per student today than we had in July 1st, 2016, the last time there was a significant BSA increase. So as we, as we know, we have less resources nearly every year. Although the state has been giving us one-time funds, we did have SIR funds. But as we approach this next budget cycle, we're certainly looking at a significant deficit. Rightsizing will allow us to push our money towards where it really counts for students. So two years ago, we had the same discussion in this boardroom. And we went through a series of very public town halls and discussions. And the board closed one school. And since then, we've, we have about 1,000 fewer students than we had two years ago. So the projections for continuing student decline in enrollment actually have, have shown that to be true. And so we're back talking about rightsizing again. So we know that we've had multiple discussions since April. Unfortunately, despite the time we've spent together talking about declining enrollment, the resourcing and rightsizing, a lot of this really doesn't get out to the public until the announcement of a list of school closures. So we're aware as we look at the community discussions that we be having next week, that to many people across this community, this is all new. And that they don't realize we've been talking about it for a significant amount of time. But we're prepared for those discussions. So in September, we had our third of three surveys and the community gave us feedback on what was, what were their priorities? What was important to them? And as in nearly every survey we do, it is school programs. They, I mean, our families, our students, they love their schools. They value their school programs. There was a much bigger number this year than two years ago that said they understand and a priority is operational costs and efficiencies. Also with staffing efficiencies, because families are seeing on some schools that are very small that, that they aren't being staffed at the level they were several years ago. And so they put that as a priority. And, and of course adequately sized spaces, which we shoot for every year. So I'll go through real quick these, what led to this evaluation rubric components were the priorities from the survey that helped inform us so we could provide these seven components. And we scored every school in the district on each of these seven areas. And I'll just talk through a few of them. And of course, if you want to deep dive, we can do that one-on-one, we can do that at, at other committee meetings. But we have a lot of slides to cover tonight. By and large, six of the seven components were rated from five to one, five being the best, one being the lowest score that you would hope your school would get, with one exception. On school impacts, we ranked from one to five. And we did this to help the Title I schools, the economic disadvantaged students, the ELL students in those schools with a high special education population. It gave them a little bit of an edge on not being the first school that you would look at closing. I think the board is comfortable with size and utilization. We briefed a year ago in depth, multiple briefs on capital plans to include facility condition index. So we did put that naturally in the rubric. Cost effectiveness was really maintenance and utilities, the general operational cost of the building. And then we looked at them as to whether either in whole or in part, that building could be looked at for some type of repurposing. We also looked at the percentage of zero to four population, which we'll talk about in a follow on slide. So if you were to picture in your head, this is very difficult to read and I, I appreciate that. But I, I did think based off the emails that we got all weekend that we should show at least the aggregate score of the rubric in a public forum. As you look from to the far left, it will show each of the seven for Fire Lake, staffing effectiveness through alternative use, the scores that they received. You'll also see in blue weighting factors. So we did in fact weight staffing effectiveness, size and utilization, and condition of the building higher than all other factors. So they received a little bit of bump in order to make sure that as we look at the resources we have, that we're saving them for the best buildings that we have. And then you can see the, the combined score in the yellow column near the far right. So when you look at the number one or 2.7 or whatever the number is, when we rated the schools, we ranked them in quintiles, which is 20% groups. So when you go to the far right, you'll see a group based off a normalized quintile. You'll see one through four. We actually did one through five. So the bottom 20 schools of combined score would receive a one. The next group would receive a two. And the group that you probably would not look at for repurposing or closure or combining would have received a five. And naturally, within each of those areas, you have every version from Eagle River Elementary, which had low utilization, but nearly a brand new school since we rebuilt it after the earthquake. So that is the combined score rubric. There's certainly going to be questions on this. So when you look at it, you would think initially.
Mr. Anderson, if I can break in, I do want to note that Member Bellamy has joined us in person. And Member Jacobs had a question back a little bit.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a question on the evaluation rubber components. I think it might be useful to briefly explain if we could how we calculate utilization. And I think the specific question I received on it, which might be wise to just discuss here in this setting is, does that include pre-K classrooms and any summer school activity?
It does include pre-K classrooms. It would not include rentals. Just like when we rent out to basketball clubs or swim clubs or, well, maybe not swim, basketball clubs or people that use the sports fields, we don't ever count things like that. So at the school that you're talking about, where they said they have a childcare before and after school, that would not be part. that would not be part of what you would consider utilization. If it was a full-day program, then you could look at it as a childcare program and say that it's education support or wall it off and then indeed let you not count that square footage toward your utilization. But you certainly would not include rentals or summer school.
Just a quick follow-up. Is it possible to have a more layperson's perspective as to how we calculate utilization? And then I know that we have a different way to calculate than the state. Are these numbers, do we use our calculation or the state's calculation?
We're using our calculation and we did an entire brief last fall. I can pull that brief out again and pull the utilization slides and put a description and post that on the website.
That would be great.
Under right sizing because it is, it is difficult and it's different for elementary than it is for secondary.
Thank you, sir.
So when you look at.
I'm sorry, also have a question from member lessons.
Thank you. It's also a utilization question, but it's about special education. And what I think I heard is that you were considering a high populations of special education students, so sort of density. But my understanding is that we have a range of special education course, you know, offerings. And some of our rooms, you know, may only have four or five students in them and a school may have four or five or more, you know, classrooms dedicated to a low number of students with high needs. So can you talk about utilization?
That's correct. So if you look at Homestead SBBS program, they have five classrooms that they use. We would have counted all five classrooms as being used for that program. Again, I'm sorry, are there more questions? Okay, okay. So when you look at Fire Lake, you see that it ended up being one of the seven schools that we mentioned or recommended for closure. But just because it had the lowest combined score doesn't mean it would have been closed. We look, when you look at Fire Lake, if you look at Fire Lake, Homestead and yeah, Alpenglow, all three in Eagle River in the top four. We really looked at them individually and looked at each school and found that the best one to support by transportation. It could also push students into Birchwood, which would help their utilization rate. And it was a clean line when we further looked at future potential boundary changes at middle and high. It made a clean line and a link for feeder schools all the way from elementary through middle to high. So Fire Lake was chosen, but then you look at Bear Valley. If you look at Bear Valley, O'Malley and Huffman, they were all three in the top thirteen. But we weren't going to close all three just because they were in the top thirteen. We individually looked at the schools and and did the detailed analysis because the deferred maintenance for Huffman was almost a third of the deferred maintenance at Bear Valley. When you looked at O'Malley, they had two hundred and forty students in an immersion program. But one of the board guardrails was to retain special programs intact. And moving two hundred and forty students from O'Malley was problematic into one individual gaining school. So we didn't. The rubric really was a start and I think I briefed that two weeks ago was the rubric only existed to help us narrow down the number of schools that we could identify based off those seven factors and do the detailed analysis. And the detailed analysis did include, is it a walking school? Is it a busting school? Where are the students going to go and will we require more buses or less buses? Because both of those cases actually occurred throughout the analysis of forty-five schools. We looked at boundary impacts. We looked at multiple different demographic overlays and I'll just click on one to show a zero to four population density. So green is the highest density. Naturally, all of Jay Bear isn't not, there's not houses in that bulk of that area. But the Jay Bear population is still having significantly more babies than the general population across the Anchorage Bowl. You can see areas that are, green is between nine and a half to a little over twenty-five percent of the total population in that area that is ages zero to four. Now this was from the twenty twenty-two census report. When a new one comes out, we'll obviously be able to update this. But then you'll see blue, which is, you know, the darker blue is six and a half percent to a little over nine percent of the total population. And then at red, it doesn't mean there's no children in those areas. It means it's between zero to two percent of the total population that live in that area. So then Shannon, we did detailed breakouts of every deeper dive area across town and you can see that even on South Side, there are areas where the population of zero to four year-old student, children. There's still populations of twenty-five percent of that population in that area that are zero to four years old. And then you can look over and see that that clearly the red and the gray in the, in the light blue also exists where there's far less children being born. So we did look at Title One and CEP. That detailed analysis will continue to occur over the next several weeks as we look at what would be the impact of closing a Title One or a CEP school and moving them to a new school? And what would that end result be as a measure of making sure we focus on children? We move sped programs every year. We are continuing to look at that as a best way again to take the limited resources we have and apply them to provide the best outcomes. And then naturally we look at repurpose potential and that will continue through the middle of December. So now we have these seven schools for closure and consolidation that we talked about. The score next to, let's start with Fire Lake in the upper left of eighteen point three. You can see the staffing areas where it really did have lower scores that 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 led to them having an aggregate combined overall low score. So Fire Lake was the lowest scoring of four Eagle River Elementary schools. And they have half of the students they had in nineteen ninety-five. That's actually a trend in many schools across the district because we've lost over six thousand students. And although there is new housing being built in that area, it's not enough to significantly impact school enrollments in the area. And Shannon has seen that discussion many times and and I thought what you brought out earlier about the ninety-nine and the one was if you'd like to. Because he sees this everywhere he goes.
So in any given year, if we have a significant in any given year, when we have
Closer.
Amount of new housing in an area. It's never more than one percent of the total housing stock. So we can have a trend in the overall existing housing stock that almost always it almost always overshadows what's happening with that new housing stock. So in the case of Fire Lake, even though we have a significant development that is straight south of the rec center and the school building there, there's just not enough units there given the overall total unit count in the Fire Lake attendance area to to overwhelm the school. There are also some condominiums along the Old Glen Highway that are that are under construction right now. And again, the scale of that is just not enough to where it would overwhelm the school and change the enrollment trajectory in a really meaningful way. And throughout the Anchorage Bowl, our new housing construction situation is not as robust as a lot of us would like it to be. So there's just not that much new housing creating a student impact. And nationally, because of child production rates and family size among millennials and Generation Z young adults, we're just not seeing huge impacts in the school enrollment statistic from new housing in general.
Thank you. So we'll go to the next school. If you look at Baxter, it's built in. It's in a built-out neighborhood with a really low student yield per house. But it's adjacent to a lot of schools that have capacities. So you'll see emails that talk about why would we have more schools on the east side of town? And a lot of it is, those are the older schools and when they were built, they built them in neighborhoods that were really neatly laid out and crisscross patterns and schools were really close together. And so you will see eight, ten schools in just a few miles area. Whereas you move toward the South Side, you you just don't see that. So those schools where they're no longer having babies necessarily, well, certainly not at the rate they were forty years ago. And an aging population in those areas, there's just so many low-utilized schools so close together that that is, that is what ends up being the end result of looking at how to best utilize your schools. I talked about Bear Valley a little bit. And we'll, I'm sure we'll talk about Bear Valley a lot in the next several weeks. But Tudor, it was clustered in an area with multiple other underpopulated schools. And I'll defer to Sven to talk about the effectiveness of the Montessori program at Tudor and why we chose to merge it in with Denali Montessori.
So the, the number of students that are in the Tudor Montessori program actually will fit quite nicely into the Denali Montessori program. It gives us a lot more ability to have staff training, make sure we have certified Montessori teachers in that school and provide that program at a much higher rate of success than we've been able to in in the recent past with with the Montessori program. The program has become a program that is pretty costly and on top of that, we haven't been able to find teachers that could be that are certified in the Montessori program for that program.
Thank you. So if you look at Nunaka Valley, you know, unfortunately, they were on the list a couple of years ago and they also have gotten significantly smaller. They now have only thirty-nine students that reside in that neighborhood boundary going to the school. And the area just isn't producing more students. In fact, fifty-seven of them are bused from West Boniface. The other thing with with Nunaka, as it got smaller and smaller is they're now well below the Title One percentage. They'll contain, they'll continue to get Title One this year, but at twenty-six percent, they won't be able to continue being a Title One school or CEP school because Title One doesn't include pre-K. As you look at Lakewood, it's one of the lowest utilized schools in the district. Many of the houses around that area are families who who aren't having children and and a lot of them actually work in the airport. And Wonder Park, I'll probably, I'll hand this off to Sven after I get it started, but it is one of two seventies open space schools remaining in the district. It's Wonder Park in Sussetna and there have been some challenges with the open, open spaces.
We, at Wonder Park, we have four classrooms that are SLC classrooms and the open spaces do not work for that particular population of kids because of the elopements. And we are actually, and we have been looking at possibly moving that program from Wonder Park. So even the capacity would even go much lower after we move that program, which we're probably going to do at the end of this school year.
So I'll walk you through how we got from the top forty-five schools on the list and and where we're at right now. So we did do the detailed analysis. We came up with forty-five schools and we really started deep diving on each of those schools. Everyone has seen the list for the seven. When we looked at all the gaining schools and we went by student population, where they live, geolocated and picked the gaining schools, they were no longer low-enrollment schools. So we took them off the list and there were twenty-four to continue looking at. So we looked at those schools and we removed Aurora and Ursa Minor, both on Jay Bear, both like Ursa Major, also on the list to be considered for an eighty percent federal money match to rebuild those schools. So once we work through right sizing, we'll start looking at what is the long-term strategic plan on Jay Bear. So we'll address those two schools at a future time. Girdwood's so far south that you really couldn't move them all the way into the South Side in in forty-five minutes. Inlet Views did by the rubric show up as a school that could be considered for closure combining, but fortunately, the the voters in Anchorage also saw, also saw a couple of years or last year the foresight to rebuild that school. But this is, I wanted to keep Inlet View. Actually, I didn't intentionally keep it in the rubric, but the rubric would have picked it because of the population concerns and the building condition and everything else. But this is where I go back to, there will be people who take the rubric, the initial rubric and say, but my school is one higher or one lower or ten higher or ten lower. It should have been the other school. I agree, it should be any school but that one. But the rubric was never designed. It was seven areas where you could look at to neck down the number of schools you had to look at for detailed analysis. It was not designed to preclude a school from being on a list or to make sure that a school was a closure candidate. Then we removed the four remaining schools over eighty percent. There were other reasons why the rubric would have put them in the top forty-five. And now we have the partial repurposing candidates and we'll be looking at those schools in a deep dive for the next several weeks. And in the briefing two weeks from tonight, you will see a lot of new partial repurposing and plans for spaces that are vacant in those buildings.
All right, to get to.
Member lessons and then member Higgins.
Thanks. So just to clarify, does that mean that if a school is on the list of partial repurposing candidates, there's more information coming in the future?
Yes, in two weeks at the nineteenth. Well, you'll get a little bit here as I go through through this next piece around boundaries and the receiving schools and how many students and whatnot. Looking first at the first three that we're recommending on year one, Bear Valley. The, under remarks, we put down their closure. We are not recommending repurposing for Bear Valley at this time. Number of students that are looking to go to different schools, we're looking at having eighty students go to O'Malley, hundred and four to Rabbit Creek and a hundred and twenty-one to Huffman. And if you look at the map, you can see that these ovals kind of show you where these particular kiddos live, the bottom two ovals. Those would be going to Huffman Elementary. The top one oval at the very top, those students would be going to O'Malley and the two on the left, those would be going to Rabbit Creek. So that kind of gives you an idea of on the map where those kids would be going. And as we did this and as we looked at these, our busing, our transportation people were right beside us as we were looking to see are these stops doable? Are these, are these routes doable? So they were right there with us. There was a lot to go into just finding, figuring out which students and which community neighborhoods would be going to specific spots in the and the other schools.
Sorry, member Higgins and then member lessons. Member Higgins, did you have a question?
Okay, I thought you said, I'm sorry. I guess I'm looking at these floors and I'm looking, Bear Valley had the roof done work. They had a bunch of stuff done and I thought it was in pretty good shape, but you've got Tudor without any building conditions. They've got the leaky roofs. They've got the entrance that's not there. I'm just kind of curious how Bear Valley shows up as having a building condition, a low factor, but Tudor doesn't.
We will also be providing more details on each of the schools at the town hall or at the community listening sessions. And we'll have much more detail than we could show in a one-hour brief.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to be wanting, I'll come back with the information on that one.
I will tell you though, if you look at the rubric and you pick one thing and that one thing is fixated on over everything else, it wouldn't have accounted it for all the other things we looked at.
Okay, when we talk about the size and utilization, there's a waiting list of people trying to get in there, but the issue about having staffing enough to be able to handle that. How does that factor into your size and utilization when it's a lack of staff as opposed to a lack of people wanting to get into the school?
We did not look at waiting lists as part of the rubric. The rubric we briefed two weeks ago included those seven major components and we did not consider the waiting list. Frankly, you don't know where they came from or on the waiting list if they're already in another school. And and just wouldn't come anyway. I don't, I don't know how you could, other than not do anything. I don't know. I mean, we could add another rubric and look at waiting lists, but it's not going to change that Bear Valley needs about sixteen million dollars to keep that building going for the long term. Huffman needed about five and a half. O'Malley needed close to what Bear Valley needs, but we couldn't find a place to move the two hundred and But we couldn't find a place to move the two hundred and forty immersion programs intact. But otherwise, you could have looked at those two schools. It's, it's more complicated than, than one thing.
Couple of years ago, when we looked at this, the finance of it didn't prove to be that big an issue. We talked about some of the advantages otherwise. So when you look at Bear Valley and you look at their academic outcomes, which is pretty high, as I understand. And I'm wondering, how do you factor in the impact of? Do you factor in at all? You're looking at staffing effectiveness. I'm not sure what all that could include. But I'm looking at that and saying, okay, this is one of the, one of the higher schools is, is, it's got people wanting to get in, but they can't because of staffing, as I understand, and school's in great shape. Well, appears to be physically good shape. I'm gonna be interested in getting more information about that. But I'm just kind of curious how you factor in the impact on educational outcomes? Because that's really the goal here is the educational outcomes. And if they're getting high outcomes, but they don't have some of the programs they could have, who cares? We're worried about outcomes, right?
Right. As you look at declining enrollments, it's gonna continue getting smaller. And districts around the nation, let's take Fairbanks, for example. The first year Fairbanks was able to close three schools. They went through a, a metric similar to this. They did a long, lengthy public process, ended up saying, ooh, let's just form a committee. The committee met and they realized that even on a committee, it's really contentious. And they came back and picked the two oldest schools. The next year, they closed the one on the Air Force Base and just made it part of the budget without the town halls. When you look at, and I, I would defer to Sven and Chris Opitz. Chris has briefed many times that we don't grade our schools based off the student outcomes of the schools because there's so many factors that contribute to whether that school is high performing or not. And I would be the last person to pretend to really know exactly what that means. Because Chris has been doing this since Sven forever. But that's why we did not include the performance of the school because those same children going to another high performing school are likely to continue being high performing.
You know, when we went, and I, I don't know if we've shared this at all with you as a school board, but when we closed Abbott Loop, we followed those students that moved from Abbott Loop to Cassoon and Trailside. And we looked at the difference in their test scores from their last year at Abbott Loop and their first year at their new school. And those test scores went up significantly. They were able to get the support that they needed in those bigger schools. They were able to have those services right there for them and not miss them. You know, when we talk about Bear Valley, you know, and talk about effectiveness and efficiencies, Bear Valley has like a point four health teacher or a point four art teacher. Well, every time you have a point something teacher and they happen to travel from other places, you lose efficiencies and you lose, and it costs a lot more to run those schools. And that's what we're having all across our district now is such inefficiencies because of the lack of staff that we can have as full-time employees at our schools. Every time, anytime an AEA member gets in a car to move, it traveled from one school to another, that's a point two of an FTE. So yeah, you know, we have five teachers, there's one FTE. We just lost over a hundred grand, right? So we have to, as far as like looking at these schools, these like Cassoon now has a better efficiency. Trailside has a better efficiency than they did before the Abbott Loop move. So anyways, that, that efficiency piece is, is, is something that Bear Valley was docked on because of the, because of the different specials and the low number. Another, I guess when we get to another school, I can explain.
Is that complete? Member Higgins?
No.
Uh, member Watsons and then member Jacobs.
I know time is short, so this will be just a request for further clarification. At the previous slide, O'Malley is going to propose to go to three schools. It's a very big geographic area. I know you described where the circles are. Can you please prepare a better map showing who would go where? Because I don't yet understand it, and I spent a lot of time driving kids around town in circles. And if I were a parent at Bear Valley, I would want to better understand the new route to school. So it's just a request for further information.
We can look at that in the next two weeks.
Okay, I mean, it's just in the future, please.
I mean, the, the colored dots show what school they go to. So when we blow this up, when we blow this up and we put it on the poster boards for the community listening sessions, we will have a transportation person and a, and an instructional person at each of these places around the room where people can walk around and find more information. And they'll be able to explain that the red dots are the gaining schools or the green dots or whatever color the dots are on the other slides.
And every one of those dots represents a household that has kids going to Bear Valley right now.
That is, and that is more information that I understood five minutes ago, so thank you.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a question on the receiving schools. Are, how many of, or are any of the receiving schools going to be over a hundred percent programmatic capacity?
None of them.
None.
I was just, I was looking at our CIP and the breakdown. And it seems like Otis is gonna be pretty close, but is that enrollment expected to drop with the next graduate? Or does the current demographic information, the CIP include sixth graders? Or where's my math off on it?
I'm sure we're also looking at the two to two-point-three percent decline as well next year, which we've seen year over year over year. But we've, we've done the math, we looked at every household that was in those areas. How many students? Obviously, some students, most students, all students leave fifth grade and leave the school. The kindergarten class coming in is a smaller kindergarten class than the kindergarten class the year before. And that's what we're seeing.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
And so I guess maybe just a follow-up request for information at some point. If on the receiving schools, we could put an anticipated, what we think the enrollment or capacity will be at? That might be helpful. I mean, I won't hold you to it, but just so I can, I can tell folks who ask me with certainty that we aren't going to be above programmatic capacity that we set, we set that number, right? So.
Right. Over the next, over the next four weeks, we plan on showing not just that, but the Title One status of the gaining school, whether it went up or down and by what percent, as well as again, CEP and other factors.
There, there are other things that we're probably moving out of some receiving schools that might go to another school that is still part of the process that we have to go through, that we have that will, that will.
Sure.
Let you know about.
No, I just understood. I, I appreciate you humoring the question. I mean, we're trying to poke into, to stuff that I know this is gonna be a process that lasts longer than today. Can I ask one other question from a, a different perspective? So specifically regarding the forty-five minute transportation window for Bear Valley, had a question, I'm not from that part of town. And so can you speak to the level of confidence in being able to meet that transportation window forty-five minutes with, with those students in particular?
The reason we picked the schools for the gaining schools was because of the major roads that allow them to go relatively quick. I'll say though, when you have a snowmageddon or a snowpocalypse and every car in front of the bus is going ten miles an hour, then the bus will also go ten miles an hour. And so every bus, when every car is going slow, will be late. We saw that this past week in areas of town where people wondered why the buses were late. But we had major roads like Rabbit Creek, Rabbit Creek closed for two hours. Well, that meant the buses were also closed for two hours. So the conditions on the roads have and always will have an impact on every driver, including the school buses. I, I don't know how to promise.
Just a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair. Yeah, to be clear, I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that any school guaranteed transportation in a window, given the increased snow that we've seen over recent years. I guess I, I just want to make sure that we're factoring that in. And that to the extent that we can, we have a high level of confidence that we're going to be able to serve those students with the issues that we know exist within our MOA.
We ran every student on every bus through the software program.
Wait, I asked specifically on every single one of these specifically to Heather and Courtney. They were sitting right in the meetings with us. Are you comfortable to be able to do this? And to the, to a T, they said this is doable.
Then one last follow-up on this thread in particular. So is there, not just for any one particular school, but there will be the question of how much we will spend in additional transportation funds to drive students longer than they would if they were walking to a neighborhood school? And so are we, are we going to be able to articulate what that cost is, assuming it's, it's a real figure that exists?
We will, after we've gone through all of our special education programs and confirmed where those will be and what busing requirements will be, so we're a few weeks out.
Any further questions from staff, I mean, from board members right at the moment?
All right, moving on, we're gonna go into Lake Otis or Lakewood. Lakewood is a year-one school that we're recommending to have a closure. We're repurposing, or we're recommending a repurposing of this to an existing charter school. One of the things that came out in some of the stuff over the weekend was people saying, what are we adding more charter schools? That isn't the take on this, the idea is it'd be an existing charter school. We've not gone through those processes yet, so we need to wait to actually announce those kind of things. Some programs that are being affected is the pre-K and SBBS program. The SBBS program is part, that part of the program would be moving to Northwood because they have space for that. And the students, a hundred and thirteen, would be going to Turnigan Elementary School and sixty-two to Northwood. And if you look at the map, the new boundary for the map would be just literally north-south Wisconsin Boulevard. So anybody to the east of Wisconsin, or, yeah, east of Wisconsin would be going to Northwood and west of Wisconsin would go be, be going to Turnigan. Then we move to Tudor. Tudor Elementary School would have two groups of students. The repurpose of this building is we were recommending a Whaley K-12 and outreach move to this building. The program affected, of course, is the Montessori program. The Montessori program is being proposed to go and join the Denali Montessori program. And the neighborhood students would be moving to Lake Otis, so literally Lake Otis or Denali Montessori, and that map would just be pretty simple. If you live in the area, you'd be going to Lake Otis. If you were a Denali or a Montessori student and wish to continue to be a Montessori student, you would go to Denali Montessori. Then we move to Fire Lake. Fire Lake, the repurpose would be for an existing charter school. Program affected is an SLC program. That SLC program from Fire Lake, we are looking to move them to Eagle River Elementary School. There are a hundred and eight students that we would be moving to Eagle River, forty to Birchwood and two to Chugiac. And if you looked at the map, when I say two up in the upper oval, there's literally two students in that upper oval that go to Fire Lake Elementary School. Now, there might be more next year, but what have you. And then along the highway, we'd be proposing those go to Birchwood. And the ones that are in Eagle River proper would be going to Eagle River Elementary School. And Fire Lake is a year-two school, I forgot to mention that. Nunaka Valley is a year-two school also. The repurpose of that building would be for pre-K school. We do have seven pre-Ks in that school right now. As, as Jim mentioned, we are, we only have a small number of students that actually live in the Nunaka Valley area. And to give you a little more context of that, this year, we didn't, the PTR for Nunaka Valley, and the FTE that was allocated for Nunaka Valley didn't even come to a one teacher per grade level. So we had to add a teacher to Nunaka Valley to be able to offer a kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth and fifth grade class. Those are very small classes in that school because, and it's a very expensive per child school. So that, if you look on the map for that one, my eyes cannot see that. Oh, it's Boniface, the north-south. So anybody to the east of Boniface would be going over to Chester Valley. And to west of Boniface would be going to Russian Jack Elementary School. Then another year-two school would be Wonder Park. Wonder Park, we're recommending the closure of that school. And we are looking at programs affected are pre-K and an SLC program. I mentioned before that we're looking to move that SLC program in intact to another school close by that can hold that school, not one of the ones that we were recommending for the actual feeder, the accepting schools. A hundred and three students would be going to Willowawa Elementary School. This is a school, Mr. Jacobs, that we will be talking about in two weeks. And seventy-eight students would be going to Tarmigan Elementary School. If you looked on the map for this one, this one has the rectangle on the bottom oval will be going to Willowawa and the top oval would be going over to Tarmigan Elementary School. And then when you look at year-three schools, so the last school that would be recommended for closure, the repurpose of that would be for an existing charter school and the affected school on that is an SLC program. We are looking at moving that in, in, of it, as a whole to another school. However, I'm not ready to announce that because we still have some work to do on that one. And the, the kids from that school, fifty-three would be going to Scenic Park, ninety-nine to College Gate and seventeen to Chester Valley. If you've noticed, Chester Valley's been mentioned twice now as a receiving school. And if you look on, on the map for that school, above Northern Lights would be going to Chester Valley. East of Baxter, Baxter would be going to Scenic Park. And west of Baxter would be going to College Gate Elementary School. So that is all of the schools and kind of where they're going as far as new boundaries would go. Moving on, the next steps that we have currently, on October fifteenth, we got your guidance. Then today is the day we are working with you in this work session, of course, with initial list recommendations throughout now until December seventeenth. Staff will be doing a lot more rightsizing analysis. We'll be bringing you more and more information as the details, as we, as we're ready to give you those details. Next week, we have a number of, of community conversations happening. On the twelfth, we'll be at Chugiac Elementary, or Chugiac High School. On the fourteenth, we'll be at the MECAK meeting. On the fourteenth, we'll be at Diamond High School. The sixteenth, which is a Saturday, will be at Bartlett, that is gonna be at noon. And on the eighteenth, we have two different virtual conversations, one at eleven AM and one at six PM. On December third, we anticipate bringing the rightsizing recommendations to you and, and non-action and then asking on the seventeenth for that vote. And that is all of our presentation. We, but if you have questions, we can answer.
Member Jacobs?
Thirteenth? I think it's at five-thirty.
Five-thirty on the thirteenth, is that correct, Mr. Riley?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might with a question?
Yes.
So a, a question specifically on the community conversations. Could you walk through what you anticipate the format looking like for those? I envisioned a process similar to two years ago when we really began the conversation of rightsizing. Is it any, in any way similar? Will the public specifically be able to have a question and answer session?
I think you'll find that this one is a big improvement over the way we did it last time. And Tony and Heidi Ambley have put a lot of effort into this, so I think she's the best person to speak to it.
So for the community conversations, we want it to be more of a dialogue. We know that people will still come here and express their opinions and feelings, and we want to give them that space. But we know that, like Jim said, a lot of the community has not been following this process all the way through. So it will start with a brief presentation and introduction with how we got here. So going through things like the rubric and our enrollment and decline and what that looks like. And then what will happen is there will be two different sessions that are happening. So there's space for people to go to both. So essentially, what will happen is one will be on boundaries and transportation. So they will have all these maps printed that you saw, but that they can walk around and see and go up to someone and ask, where's my student gonna go to school next year? The other one will be a focus on levels of service, so talking about things like what happens, like what Sven said, when we have a point four art teacher and what that looks like. And also talk about what class sizes will look like. The goal isn't just to create large classes, it's to create multiple sections of those classes. So making sure that people understand what that looks like, but also spaces where they can ask about special services and programs, whether that's. Whether that's Montessori or sped or Title One Indigenous Ed, things like that. So it'll start with one main presentation and then there will essentially be two breakout presentations. The presentations will be no more than ten minutes. The bulk of that, those section times is really people walking around and asking questions. About what they're still concerned about. We'll continue to collect feedback during that process in case anything comes up that we missed. So there'll be an additional survey that's happening during that time. It's a little bit more open-ended format. Because we got that as feedback, that people just wanted a space to provide that. So we'll include that in the analysis coming up to make sure that we haven't missed anything and also just an understanding of what the community is feeling as well.
Second, thank you. Um, appreciate that. And those sound great. Now, I I'm gonna be making a point to attend each of them. So thank you. Um. We we know that um. I I I think it's over forty percent. The last time I looked at our families are economically disadvantaged. And I can imagine that many of them are not gonna have time or space to attend. Um, one of these listening sessions or let alone a school board meeting. And so how can we? Make our best effort to bridge that delta and ensuring we're communicating with all of our stakeholder groups is, I mean, have we considered investing? Um, resources to uh to do a mailer? Are we working on email communication? Um, are digital and comms team are really done some amazing work on social media? Is there like a YouTube video where we can? Show a really boiled down version for explaining that we overbuilt. Elementary schools in East Anchorage, for example, and um want prioritized walkable neighborhoods and neighborhood elementary schools. And then our state stopped funding us at a rate to allow us to afford that financially. Um. It it just some of those, those really, those points that you could pick up here in a meeting or one of these listening sessions, but. Um, just really seems to, it doesn't, it doesn't um make its way out to the community. So are there other ways besides those? Um, community conversations and these board meetings that we can utilize to help spread facts about our process?
So we have thought about that throughout this process. One thing that we tried to do with having the two virtual sessions is to have that. Kind of mid morning after drop off Monday new uh Monday session and then the evening session. That's also why we brought together. So the Mecac meeting will actually be a first time joint advisory committee meeting where we. Will actually have our Title One migrant indigenous ed and special education. Um, so we thought about it there as well as interpreters and languages, so top languages. So that will be something that we have at these sessions. Um, in particular, we've done some uh. Like videos, YouTube videos around survey results. That was one thing that we were hearing was just wanting to know where feedback goes. Um, but we anticipate that we will continue over the next month to put out things like that with communications, especially. Less than a minute videos because that really gets people's attention. Um, that will focus on some of these points that you just talked about that will be focused in on the introduction sessions as well.
Member Wilsons.
Um, this is, I'm just putting it out there. One of my reflections two years ago was that six o'clock in the evening is a really hard time. If you are a parent with young kids who are hungry and tired and cranky and you're still wanting to learn more. Is there a way that we can, number one, offer spaces for childcare? In any of these, if they're at schools, can we have, you know, a room available with somebody who can, you know, watch? Watch the kids while the parents do the talking? And two, is there any sort of food we can serve that'll help tide people over? Uh, coming home from work. I mean, just, you have hungry kids.
So we will have snacks. Um, at least at the Mecac meeting, uh, the advisory committee meeting, we will have childcare provided. But that's also something that I'll work on um to see if it's some kind of element that we can incorporate into the other sessions.
Member Donald.
So could you go over the part where there's gonna be presentations, but then will the, will it be followed by a? Question and answer period like we did last time with a whole room? You're saying no.
Last time we had everyone stay in the one main auditorium. This time there'll be breakout rooms. So. Some might go to the cafeteria or wherever Tony is locked in, the library or something where it'll be much more personal. Um, the person up there will still give a quick overview of what they're covering in that room. And you'll see people around the room with different areas of expertise. Where people will be able to just come up and say, I just don't get this three section per grade. What does that mean? So someone will be there to explain it. There'll be someone to say, yep, I'm the bus person. I can, where are you on this map? Okay, yeah, you'll be going here. Um, and they'll be able to go around the room and and talk to people and have like an actual conversation. Instead of you have two minutes on an open mic and then it's the next person's turn. Um, they don't even have to, the way Tony has it set up. Switch and go to the other session. They could stay at that one session if there's something that they're. Very fixated on and really wanna understand. And I think Tony's got, um. You know, they can always go to to one of the other sessions if they really spent the whole time at just one of them. And if I could add. Much more focused on people talking and not being briefed.
Yeah, and I would say that one of the additions that we're making is that we'll have more adults that are trained on this topic who will be. Um, at these community conversations than in the past. Um, what I've learned from two years ago is that you have. Different families with different questions. And this time around, we have even more schools and communities that are impacted. So the vision here is to really go deeper. Than an open mic uh format allows. And I think that our our families really deserve that chance to go really deep with the content experts. We heard questions on a number of topics. Of course, we received general feedback that they don't support the plan. But we actually got dozens of questions on, how does this affect uh Title One uh services? How does this impact, you know, my English language learner student? Uh, our S L C classrooms are impacted and we just really have incredibly complex topics that we need to go deeper. So that we can build that trust with the community. With that said, this is our first time using this format. So there may be some bumps along the way. But I truly think that this is a step in the right direction to to really make that a more intimate two-way dialogue between staff. And families who are really going through a difficult time.
Now, note that Member Wilson has joined us in person in the boardroom. I also wanted to ask if if there were factors that caused you to choose some schools to go in the first year, some in the second, some in the third.
Yes, there were. Um, we, we spent hours trying to figure out which was a year one or a year two. Um, and and the. Like, when you look at Tudor Elementary, we need, if it's going to be the new Whaley, and if you, if any of the board has not been to Whaley. I will find you a bus if you wanna meet at the boardroom. And make sure all of you get to Whaley to go visit that school. They need a new school. Um, they've needed one for a long time. And 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 when you go there, I think everyone would agree with that. So we needed, we needed time to design and we're gonna have to do improvements. At Tudor to be able to have it ready for Whaley to move in. So we needed that to be a year one.
There is another reason for year one also, and that is the fact that with the Montessori program, we. We thought we might lose people that would want to go into Montessori program, or they might go ahead and leave and go to Denali or we. That Montessori program, I know it's been struggling, but we wanna support them as much as possible. So that kind of was. A big thing is, let's make this one so that we can get the support that they need.
And on schools that are receiving potentially charter schools, we almost certainly would have looked at when their lease expires. Uh, um, in order to time it to be able to make that school available when it was necessary. There was a number of factors that. Led to it. Some of them will become clearer um two weeks from now, I think. As as uh we work with APCs, we work with principals to flesh out some of the repurposings. And then you'll see some of the other programs for the special education moves. And I I think you'll feel comfortable. Um, maybe, maybe not agree with everything that we come up with, but I think I'll understand why.
Other questions from board members? Member Jacobs.
Yeah, um, thank you. Since we touched on the topic of uh charter schools and APCs, I'm I'm not gonna let this one go. So I'm gonna keep. Thank you for asking about it. Um, charter schools and transportation. I went, at what point do you wanna hear from the board how we utilize this intersection of right sizing? To talk about how we begin to address bringing down the barrier of charter schools and transportation?
I think the best time would be after the board has made a decision as to what to close. Um, obviously, it could be anywhere from zero to seven. Um, and so there's no point in doing a contract with a potential charter school. If the school never closes. So I think we'd follow what we did with the N C C S, which is board makes a decision in December. Uh, we receive board guidance. Uh, we certainly would work with you and assuming the rest of the. Three other board members agree with you or more. Um, I I would think that would be pretty easy to put into the contract that we would sign with the charter school. And that would probably be um after the budgets approved, because it's not that urgent. Uh, probably in March, we would come back to the board with um agreed upon contracts with the charter schools.
Um, it's just a question for clarity then. Um, you don't need a uh uh. A vote of some kind for the board to indicate that this is a value that they have. So that we can connect with the right charter school in case there's an APC who doesn't wanna provide transportation, who appreciates the fact that. Their enrollment doesn't um reflect the the enrollment of the broader district. I don't anticipate we have a charter program like that, but. I guess you're sure you don't need that for the board now?
With the, the time would be in December seventeenth when you'll see non-action two weeks prior. Um, in December and on December seventeenth, there'll be a board memo for right sizing and the board will amend or not. Or approve or not um the entire plan. And then that would be the time to um. We we likely would go ahead and put something in there along those lines and allow board members to amend it as they see fit.
Any other questions? Member Jacobs. I I think Member Lessons had her hand up and then I'll, yeah, oh, okay.
This is not a question. It's an idea, food for thought. Um. Throughout this process, we've heard about right sizing as a way to improve uh the delivery of effective educational services. If it is at all possible, whatever happens on December seventeenth, I would like to see some kind of a guarantee. That every receiving school, th- there should not be a single combo class in any of those schools, right? They should get the level of education services that we have been talking about. I guess that's my hope or my intent.
I guess one thing I'd say to that, Miss Lessons, is that's the goal. And as you know, we can never guarantee how many in two years for a year two school, how many. Families are actually gonna be moving into those receiving schools. So we'd have to look, but the goal is to have. Solid, straight classes all the way across the board.
We also know our current governor is is here planned for two more years. It would be difficult to guarantee anything. Um, presupposing what his decisions will be regarding education funding.
And if I could just add to that, and that's part of the rationale here, is to consolidate our resources, add more adults to our building so we can get towards. Providing students the resources that our family should expect. With that said, um, given stagnant funding from the legislature, I'm only looking at the past ten years as an example, but. I do know that the board will have to consider the pros and cons of a P T R increase, if not this year, in the future. So I do want to be realistic that there are those levers that the board has that could impact the people-to-teacher ratio. But imagine. If we voted on a P T R increase and we have the same number of facilities and we keep on doing that over and over and over again. Bear Valley and other schools will actually have fewer adults than they have now. So this is really an opportunity to give ourselves a head start. Um, bracing for the fact that, of course, the the board will have to weigh the pros and cons of a P T R increase. So right sizing alone. Is not going to be the promise of that. Really, it's the state of education funding in general, but this is our best shot to get through what I perceive to be. The next several years of a lot of turbulence when it comes to the political courage to adequately invest in our schools.
Member Jacobs.
Yep, thank you. Um, just one last note um in terms of non-equity access and accessibility. Um, I was just glancing through the. Right sizing webpage we've got set up. Um, it it translates using the the Google tool at the bottom, but the the PDFs and the the things that we create don't. If we could make every effort to make those accessible, that I think we need, I I feel like we owe it to our community to make sure that we're spending the. Resources, whatever that looks like to make that happen.
Any other questions or comments from board members? If not, I think you've survived around. Thank you very much. That moves us to presentation on the high school schedule.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'll go ahead and transition our team um to discuss high school schedules. So this is one of the several deliverables that. Um, we uh told the board we would provide. Um, the other two coming up would be. Um, uh, overview of the opt-out provision. And then we also have some additional information on academies as well that we'll provide to you. But I know high school schedule is something that we did discuss um last May before the board approved the master plan. Uh, so we'd like to provide a programmatic overview. And I say programmatic specifically because, of course, um, the the board has a big decision to weigh. When it comes to our budget development process and it's completely within the prerogative of the school board to invest or not invest in a schedule change. So those conversations will be delayed over the next couple of months. But really, the point of today is for uh Mr. Prince and Mr. Backman to share. The outcomes of the tactic team that was stood up. So we'll provide a programmatic overview. And then the more budgetary consensus, um, the the eight of us will need to decide over the next couple of months. So that's not to say that you don't have the prerogative to make adjustments. This is a report on the tactic team's work. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to present. Um, I'm curious about our timing, if we have the full half an hour.
So point of information on that front, Mr. Chair, my understanding is our executive session agenda is empty. And so if the board wants to use. Uh, the hour of five to six to cover this topic because we went long for a good reason on the previous topic, we have that space. Yeah.
I'll say except that neither one of see, but yeah, we don't have a executive session.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, secondly, we've done our best to anticipate questions and also to respond to. Much of the feedback we received in the survey. So if it's all right with you, we'd love the opportunity to present uh quickly, efficiently, clearly. And then invite questions afterward. I think we're gonna get to a lot of the questions in the slides themselves.
Please proceed.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, well, we're here, of course, to to present on the high school schedule, adjustment proposal that you're all aware of. Uh, on our first slide. Uh, I've made a note at the bottom referring to the May seventh work session uh. That occurred right here. It was the beginning of a conversation about the high school bell schedule. Um, it's referenced there. Um, really, as a reminder, uh, we've done some work to try to. Include the key points made in that presentation, but more importantly, uh, we're here to present on the work of the tactic team that was formed at the beginning of this school year. And perhaps more more importantly than that, the feedback we've received from our valuable stakeholders. Um, the presentation begins with the vision statement, which has really guided the work of the tactic team. It reads, the high school schedule is an essential component of the Academies of Anchorage Master Plan. And A S D's work to ensure that all students are college, career, and life ready. To achieve the goal, adjustment to the high school schedule must include the following elements. Increased opportunities to earn credits to improve graduation rates, which of course is one of our board goals. Expanded access to C T E and academy pathways. The presentation needs to be projected.
I'm sharing. Have a little tech assistance.
Yeah.
Great. There it is. Can everyone see that? Okay. Good. I'll proceed. Um, expanded access to C T E, academies pathways. Academic support for all students across the spectrum of needs, special education, E L L, credit recovery. Advanced placement, international baccalaureate. And of course, professional collaboration time for our teachers that is embedded in the school day. On the next slide, you can see why adjusting the high school bell schedule makes the most sense, uh, having approved the master plan. For the Academies of Anchorage. If you look and and think about this from the perspective of a high school principal, I was recently. I thought about this change and knew that if we had adopted the master plan as we did in June, that it would be necessary for us to actually adjust. Our current bell schedule to uh proposed modified schedule that the tactic team was looking at. Our current bell schedule to proposed modified schedule that the tactic team was looking at. This was to address. Some of the needs to keep our students on track to graduate, meet the CTE concentrators that are. Explained in the master plan, and then also to increase. The GPA of our graduate students.
The next slide is just an important reminder of our work to increase the graduation rate, which has for many years hovered around eighty percent. This is an advanced copy of a slide we're going to look at in December, which shows moderate gain. As we make our way toward that ninety percent goal, we've gained a percentage and a bit. Since last year, we're proud of that work, but still we have a long way to go. And for me, the, this slide. May be among, if not the most important, we're going to share with you in terms of the data justifying. The proposal. So this is from the deeds website. It is the most current post-secondary and college enrollment data we have focused on our graduates in ASD. As you can see, it shows ASD's post-secondary enrollment rate is forty-two percent, which sits just above the national average of thirty-nine percent. We're really proud of that. It's important to consider the different student groups that are also shown on this chart, which show. Disproportionately low post-secondary enrollment rates compared to the average. I think that's worth noting. And then really important to this proposal to consider this statistic in the bottom left corner of the slide. That ASD CTE concentrators, that is students who take. Two or more. CTE classes in an academy pathway or a pathway. Had a seventy-eight percent post-secondary rate. So. By creating a schedule which ensures student access to CTE along with the current choices they have. We're not only supporting. A structure. That promises to raise graduation rates because of relevance and engagement, but one that promises to increase access to college.
And if I could chime in here, I mean, I think that that's a very important number, that seventy-eight percent, you know, common feedback that I'm receiving from the community is, you know, they feel that perhaps the academies model might be geared more towards those that are vocational bound. But if you look at that seventy-eight percent number, it's really interesting that engagement in current technical education work. Actually is linked to higher secondary outcomes measured through college enrollment. And I know that one of the things that we're discussing as a board is how to make our dollar go the longest way. And if you look on that slide, you'll also see the college enrollment rates by. Various subpopulations and ethnicities and races, and you'll see that we have a lot of work to get done. And if we can get our graduation rates up to ninety percent. The numbers of economically disadvantaged and underserved students could go up extraordinarily based off of that seventy-eight percent versus the forty-two. We haven't looked at that data in this way, so I just wanted to take, give the board a moment to digest that. The other thing is that I know that we looked at the National Student Clearinghouse data as a board two years ago at our retreat. And from that last report, our secondary enrollment numbers are actually, they've gone down since the cohort that we had looked at. So that just underscores the urgency. To do something, whether it's academies or additional structures or, or something else, but there's clearly. An urgent issue that needs to be resolved that impacts all students, particularly economically disadvantaged and underserved students as well as the general population.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. This, this slide right here reflects the slide that was previously shared with the school board during. Sessions in, in May of this year prior to board voting on the master plan. It speaks to the very clear five reasons why we'd want to adopt a new schedule. The benefits of having fewer transitions between classes. Having smaller learning communities throughout the school. Making sure that we have effective teaming and innovation for teaching practices. Also increased choice for students. This is an important part to kind of think about. When we consider having more options, it is actually more options for our students. I know there, we'll talk about some of the constraints and some of the benefits later, but. Camping out there, knowing that student choice is a very important thing that we look at as a school. District. I think it's important that we look at that a lot. We also want to improve the relationships and ability for teachers to collaborate. So in a model where there's going to be more opportunity for academy teams to work together, they can actually zero in on the needs of their students. This next slide is another one that was shared in, in May of this year before voting on the master plan. This shows the two most viable options that the tactic team would be evaluating and looking at in depth. That's the A period AB rotating schedule as well as a seven period AB with a skinny period, either an advisory or a. A smaller class period. This, as many of you are familiar with, is just a. An example of all the academies and pathways that are currently being adopted in the, in the school district. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the good faith effort that a lot of our schools have been doing. If you think about these pathways of all the schools represented here, six of them actually have a law pathway. And what we recently saw is an excited interest in being a part of the Colors of Justice Initiative. As well as a few law panels that were held at South Anchorage High School in Diamond. And then if we look at the Career Speed Dating, if you will, event that was held at West. Where students were given an opportunity to talk to industries and careers in a speed rotation. This aligns completely with the work of Academies of Anchorage.
This slide just reminds us all of the incredible level of community engagement we've had for the last number of years with business leaders, including the Anchorage Economic Development Commission. Working to support. Anchorage School District in the development of pathways. Going back a few slides to the post-secondary enrollment data, fifty-eight percent of our students. Do not enroll. In post-secondary institutions, that's a majority. And of course. We owe it to them to create viable pathways to. Valuable work opportunities and career opportunities right here in Anchorage. And clearly, our, our community is committed to that work.
When we look at the expanded schedule to include CTE offerings, you have on the green block, the current schedule that has four cores and two electives. If you look at the blue block, you're actually able to see the proposed schedule of having four cores. Plus a CTE and the potential of two to three elective offerings. And when we think about this. I often, I often reflect that it is our mission in the Anchorage School District to educate all students for success in life. And that is also founded in the idea that we are very serious. About having equity for students. Now, if you look at our, our high schools across the district, you can see that many of our schools. Offer zero hours. These are class periods that happen outside of the regular bell schedule. These opportunities are only. Afforded to students that can get to those schools. Whereas if we expanded our schedule to be one of the new versions, it would be available to have jazz band inside of. Your normal day. Or if you were at West High School, you could take IB Theory of Knowledge during your school day instead of having to take it after school. These kind of opportunities. Are going to be seen throughout our school district, and it's just going to be. Impacting a lot of our students who weren't able to make those zero hours, and it will give us more opportunities as we move forward.
As stated earlier, one of the. Commitments we have with the Academies of Anchorage Master Plan is to increase and embed. Educator collaborant, collaboration and planning time. So really important to point out that both. Proposed schedules, the seven period and the eight period schedule. Expand or extend educator planning and collaboration time. You see a breakdown of, of the minutes. But either option allows for teachers to gain incredibly valuable time. Again, embedded during the school day to focus on assessment. Planning, grading, evaluation. Outreach to families. Our educators deserve this time. I think that with the new curriculum and the expansion of CTE. Our educators also deserve the times to work together to develop thematic curriculum to support in-depth. And relevant learning. Connected to the CTE pathways themselves. And this brings us to the, the role of the tactic team. The tactic team was formed at the end of August. Our first meeting was August twenty-ninth, and we met on a weekly basis. From late August until October tenth. I'm really proud of the work the team did. The primary focus of the team was to gather and organize information related to these two schedule proposals. The seven period schedule and the eight period schedule, as these are the most realistic and viable schedules. That meet the needs of the. Academies of Anchorage Master Plan. The team also gathered and, and organized current research related to bell schedules. And college career life ready schedules, if you will. And of course, our primary task was to share this information with our key stakeholders and gather their feedback. We've done a lot of work organizing the feedback so that we could present to you. Along with the AOA Steering Committee and our superintendent.
Think it's important that we draw close eye to the members of the tactic team. We had. All of our eight. Conference of high school principals represented with them. They were allowed to choose. Their AEA representatives from each of those high schools. We had AEA President Corey Ace with us, as well as the Director of Student Mental Support and Mental Health of Student Support, Ms. Ally Cecil. And then we had the Academies of Anchorage team, which is including myself. Then Director Cindy Shapu, Director Devin Roberts of Career Technical Education. And then College Career Life Ready Coordinator Larissa Wright Elson, and then of course, to my left. Senior Director Eric Backman of High Schools.
And I would say, Mr. Prince and I had the privilege of co-leading that tactic team. It was a tremendous effort on the part of all participants. We didn't always agree, but we worked very hard to reach consensus on decisions. The infographic briefing tool, as we called it, is a document I'm sure you're all familiar with. Just a couple of words about it and its design. We did our best as a committee to identify those key metrics. Related to bell schedules. The design of the document allowed. Those looking at it to compare the current schedule and metrics to the proposed seven period schedule and eight period schedule. The second page of the document focuses on research related to bell schedules. Along with a link. To a, a rather large extensive summary of key research. One particular point I want to address is, is the reason the survey itself did not include questions about the six period schedule. As this came up, and we anticipated that it would come up. Of course, members of the tactic team discussed this. And ultimately reached the conclusion that to put questions on a survey about the six period schedule was disingenuous. And in fact, lack transparency. If the master plan requires a schedule to expand to seven or eight periods. By putting questions related to a six period schedule. You would certainly confuse participants. And frustrate them if the decision were otherwise. So. We made the decision not to include questions about the six period schedule as it doesn't meet the needs of the master plan of the Academies of Anchorage.
We also wanted to make sure that we're receiving feedback from our, our stakeholder groups. So we did solicit information coming back to us through the survey for students. Parents, our community members, teachers, staff and administration. We also wanted to make sure that our survey was soliciting information in the primary languages of our school district. So as you can see right there, we have listed out the translated survey. Or the survey that was actually translated into these languages to support getting accurate feedback from those groups.
Yeah, it's also worth noting that I had the pleasure of presenting to our student body leadership here at the Education Center just prior to the release of the survey. I also attended the first MECAK meeting of the year to present. The infographic tool and respond to questions from our community members there. So moving on to the survey results themselves. This first side shows a breakdown of the stakeholder groups and the response rate we had from each of them. So. The survey, as you're probably aware, was open for two weeks. We had three thousand five hundred responses, a very clean and even number. At the bottom of the slide, you see the breakdown, the number of parents and families. Students, AEA members, Totamace, community members and APA. So we're pleased with the number of stakeholders who responded. I'll add a note that for AEA, the three hundred and seventy-nine respondents, that's based on roughly four hundred and fifty. AEA members who work at the Big Eight High Schools. So we're very pleased with the response rate, particularly of our teachers.
This slide shows the survey results for the most preferable. And I think it's. It's important to, to note that because there was concerns about why we didn't solicit information. About keeping a six period day, as Mr. Backman had already stated. It would be disingenuous to ask questions about something that doesn't meet the needs of what we're seeking. I was talking with Mr. Backman about this, and it's kind of like asking your kids where you want to go to eat dinner. And saying like, would you like to go to McDonald's, Burger King or Taco Bell, knowing full well that Taco Bell is not an option. And how they would just get really mad at you if you had to make that choice. So if we look at these. These responses, it's, it lands very. Very clearly in the seven period modified block. Where we have thirty-seven percent. Actually, for option two, we have thirty-four point six percent for option one. And then the remaining half is for the other options for any period block.
We took an additional step and broke the survey results down by different. Key stakeholder groups. So the first stakeholder group are AEA members. You see a rather strong preference for the seven period options over the eight period options. With. Option two, the seven periods. With the advisory as, as the most preferred, but clearly we see a. A preference for seven periods.
When we look at the student schedule option feedback, we see that option one had thirty-six percent, option two, again. With the advisory on a, on a five of seven. For teachers and then a seven period day for students, still being the strongest runner of all of the selection. We know that the majority of our, of our students that are in high school did have a seven period day while they were in middle school. So this is something they are actually familiar with themselves.
And the parent family feedback, our third large stakeholder group, really. In many ways resembles the feedback received about AEA and students with a strong preference for the seven period schedule. We spent a lot of time. Myself and members of the Academies of Anchorage team, looking at the open response. To questions about benefits and perceived concerns. We spent a lot of time. Condensing, looking for themes and summarizing. So here's the, the most accurate condensed summary. Of the perceived benefits of the expanded schedule options, both seven and eight periods. And the most common concerns that were raised. So for benefits, we have the increase of course opportunities. Flexibility for exploration. Providing support for struggling students. And balanced daily load that reduces stress. And then on the side of concerns. The increased teacher workload. Concerns about student mental health. Confusion about the schedule. Loss of instructional time and then budget and staffing. And I would only add that it's clear how thoughtful. Respondents were to the questions. And the responses taken as a whole are very balanced. And well considered. The slides that follow are in many ways an attempt to at least address some of the concerns raised by, by the stakeholder feedback we received. This slide just addresses questions about instructional minutes themselves. So for the, the board's information, it's important to note that both proposed models. Actually offer. An increase of total instructional minutes while it's been made clear and was included in the infographic that. The length of classes is reduced somewhat. Instructional minutes expand. With a more diversity of course offerings and curricular depth. Both proposed models exceed state requirements for instructional minutes. Important to note. Another note, it's, it's really important to appreciate that academic outcomes are largely determined by high, high quality instruction, not the quantity of minutes. And just an aside. Um, and just an aside, I have taught and principled in six period schools and seven period schools and can say firsthand um with tremendous confidence that outcomes are determined by quality instruction, uh, not instructional minutes. And I think we've all experienced professional development opportunities that are long, they're not focused, they're not relevant, they mean nothing versus something much shorter, organized, relevant to the point it has value. Um, we appreciate that this concern has been raised. Um, all the research on academic outcomes points to best teaching practice, not an expansion of instructional minutes. Uh, it's also important to note that numerous high schools throughout the country have moved to seven and eight period models. I'm going to show you what that looks like on the West Coast in a later slide. Seven and eight period schedules with the blocking uh closely parallel college courses with students meeting with their teachers uh two to three times a week. It's important to note that the College Board has pacing guides for both seven and eight period schedules. Uh, and then very important to note that our E L L S P A N credit recovery course offerings will be expanded for both options. So we've really got eyes on all of our students.
As another way to kind of illustrate what a student may be going through with this uh schedule change, we created a mock-up schedule of a potential student who might want to become a nurse nurse practitioner. So what you have here would be um this assumes a seven period day. So if you're counting classes, just know that that's going to be a full load. And we're highlighting certain areas of this schedule to denote different parts of that that schedule. So if we if we look at the the next one, this actually highlights a biomedical science pathway where during the freshman year, the student would be taking the Freshman Academy Career Exploration Class, the FACE class. And then their sophomore year, they might be engaged in a Principles of Biomedical Science class. Their junior year, they would be taking uh Body Human Systems and then Medical Intervention. Uh, this is just kind of highlighting that pathway of what they would be taking in their in their seven period day. But if you go to the next slide, you're going to see where we've actually highlighted that this very high achieving student has decided that in their sophomore year, they're going to enter A P Seminar. Then their junior year, they're going to take uh two additional A P classes in A P Stats and A P Bio. And then finishing off their senior year, you can see that they're taking a robust uh robust four uh A P classes with A P Lang um Comp or A P Lit. And then you have A P Calc, A P Environmental Science, and A P German. So what you can see through this whole thing is that this student is able to still maintain a pathway, also making sure that they're still taking German, which is, which is nice. Das is good, yeah.
Impressed.
Um, and then if you go to the last slide, you can actually see that they are following a work work-based learning research plan where the capstone for their senior year is actually going to be a C T E internship that would be either offsite or as a a capstone event.
I invited a few staff members from the secondary office to engage in a little research over the last week, uh, just looking at large urban school districts up the West Coast, California, Oregon, and Washington. Uh, they got as far as looking at seventy-three different high schools from the district shown there. Uh, Washington School District, that's actually what it's called, Oregon School District, Hillsborough, Beaverton, El Grove, Fresno, Long Beach, San Diego. You see the breakdown of of bell schedules. Um, some of them are are still maintaining a six period. Some are maintaining a six period with a zero period as we do. Mr. Prince has spoken to zero period. It allows some students to access a seventh period class, but not all. Uh, a number of them have adopted the seven period schedule, some a seven period with a zero. And then the majority have adopted an eight period schedule. And we could go on with that study, but I think I think it would reflect the same outcome. Schools are moving in this direction for all the reasons that we've articulated tonight. Um, Board Member Jacobs, I think at the last meeting, um, requested some information regarding the breakdown of staffing um related to specific schools. Uh, Andy Ratliff, our Chief Business Officer, organized this slide for us. It shows um not only the cost, but the number of F T E that would be um assigned or specific to each of the Big Eight High Schools. We have it broken down for the six of eight schedule and the five of seven schedule. And of course, this is based on our current P T R thirty-one point two five, so assuming the same metric. Uh, really important to add that this year, our middle schools with the transition of sixth to seventh or sixth grade to middle school, hired seventy-nine teachers at the beginning of the year, sixty-six of whom were brand new to the district. So to create a little context, I know there's been a lot of concern about staffing. Uh, I would address this question directly with with Marty Lang uh and others in human resources. Um, I think the the hiring done at the middle school level this year gives us some indication that this forty teachers is not insurmountable, quite doable, in fact.
The the last two slides of our presentation is our Academic Services Recommendation. Our recommendation to the board is that we adopt a seven period schedule, and that begins in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our rationale for this is that it supports key goals of the Academies of Anchorage Master Plan. That stakeholder feedback, including A E A students, parents, have shown a strong preference towards the seven period day, that this will expand the teacher collaboration and planning time without adding any additional preps to their teaching load. It unifies the middle and high school with the same five of seven schedule. And that A S D high schools, schoolers are already familiar with the seven period day that they experienced in middle school. Our next steps is that we look at our bot our budget adoption, that we continue to uh refine the work of our tactic teams on the bell schedule selection as far as the skinny versus the advisory period. We continue work on our core signups because we are building master schedules very soon. We also want to give uh principals the opportunity to look at their staffing needs and start recruiting and then ongoing professional development to support this tremendous lift. Thank you for your time and attention, everyone.
And Member Higgins had his hand first in member lessons.
I've got really a bunch of them, so I probably won't ask too much right now. And um, I'm I'm interested, six of eight is less expensive than five of seven. And it seems like it would be the opposite of that. Well, how do you come up with that figure? Why do you? Why is it less expensive to have eight scheduled rather than a seven?
Yeah, it's a little counterintuitive on the face of it. Uh, and it really has to do with the 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 ratio of teaching periods to non-instructional periods. And you have a higher rate of non-instructional periods with the five of seven. So more teachers are needed to fill those openings in the schedule, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it doesn't, but I'll figure that out later. Uh, let me add C T E, we normally think of that through technology, and that tended to be more the trades, more this, more that. You're using it in a much broader sense. I mean, is biology part of C T E or is it only, where do you draw that line? Because it's it's right now, I think it's probably be confusing to a lot of people. Maybe I'm the only one.
Right, no, I uh, remember Higgins, I completely understand. I think one of the things that's sometimes conceptually hard, and I hate to age myself, but um it C T E classes when I was growing up was like woodshop or or welding classes. You know, if we wanted to take an advanced math class, we had to send someone to Matsu uh Community College because we didn't have a teacher that was teaching A P Calc. But right now, we can offer a class like uh Principles of Biomedical Science to sophomores, and that's a C T E class, but it's right in line with um students that are really interested in science. And they want to continue to pursue a career in in the medical field. So you know, we have three hospitals really close and a shortage of doctors and nurses, and students are pretty interested in that. So when we think about C T E classes, it's it it may be difficult for us to wrap our heads around the school that we knew and the school that is today. And remembering always that we want to prepare our students for the the world of the future, not the world that we grew up with in our past.
I don't think you can date yourself better than I can, so I won't go there. Um, but uh, the big question to me, and and this came up, you know, ten years ago, when we looked at the seven schedule, is buy-in from teachers and staff. And and I'm not getting the feedback, the type of feedback I'm looking for that says the buy-ins there. There's an understanding how it's going to affect them. They know what classes they're going to be teaching. Yeah, without that buy-in, that creates a real concern to me. So if if we don't get that buy-in and the board decides not to go forward right now, is there a plan how we're going to do this? What if we're stuck with six for another year because we don't have the staffing? We don't have the funds to be able to boost out, we need to get staff in. We don't have the the defined benefit. We've still got people leaving. We're not going to have the type of 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 skill sets necessarily to really expand this. We're being undermined by the legislature and the funding and and their legislative decisions, which are, in my opinion, not pro-education. And so it's impacting us. So the question is, what if we can't, what if we don't have the buy-in? And and what happens if we decide to stick with six until we can have the funds and the buy-in to be able to do it? What is there a fallback plan? You've made it sound like we have to go seven or eight, you have no choice. But the board really has a choice always. And and I'm just wondering if there's a buy, if there's an alternative plan, at least fall back.
Perhaps we'll tag team this one, Mr. Prince.
Yeah, I didn't want to make it easy.
Well, of course, yeah, um, Board Member Higgins, that's a it's a great question and comment. And of course, school opens next year. Regardless, the kids will show up. We are obligated to to provide them with the very best education and options we can, given the resources. Now that said, uh, the the school district and the school board, all of us have committed to this goal of ensuring, you know, success and support for all of our students. And I think that the the five of seven schedule um is the best option for a variety of of reasons that that we included tonight. With our teachers in mind, it's particularly important because it doesn't add a an additional prep. If you read the survey results, that was a big concern expressed by parents and families and by the teachers themselves. Uh, and it adds a non-instructional period that will strengthen collaboration, add to their planning um of curriculum and so forth. So it it really is, I think, a viable option that supports their best work. Um, change is hard. I think we can agree. Um, and the school district is dealing with a lot of change right now. Um, I I would never anticipate that everyone would leap for joy at a schedule change. It's a tough thing to do in high school. Um, that's not unique to A S D, but um I think the five of seven schedule does right by our teachers. And for all the reasons we pointed out, is a great, great option for our students and is a structural shift that will provide the support and the opportunity needed to really address the graduation rate, which we're all invested in.
Member Higgins. I had to ask for a motion to extend for fifteen minutes. Moved.
Second.
Oh, thank you. We will extend our work session by fifteen minutes. Um, and Superintendent.
Yes, Member Higgins, and I just want to underscore exactly what you stated, that the school board reserves the authority to either go this direction or not, right? So you can completely select to not change the schedule. So the question is, what does this mean for academies? And to put it bluntly, that would be a major setback in the implementation of academies. So I've made my team aware that that's certainly a possibility because it is the purview of the board, and we do have a rather major budget deficit to address. The school board may make the choice that this may not be the right time to make a schedule change, but that also means it might not be the right time to implement academies the way that we've um told the community that that we plan to. And I think that's a difficult conversation, but it's one that I'm ready for, and I think it's one that the board is ready for. So again, this isn't to take away from the very difficult calculus you have ahead of you. Really, the task of Mr. Backman and Mr. Prince was to speak with the teachers and say, if academies is going to work, what would be the ideal schedule? And we were told a seven period schedule. And I want to express compassion for the school board that that means that that would be a higher investment than we initially quoted. Because if I wanted to, I could have said, let's just go the cost efficient route, and let's just go eight periods and save two million dollars. But I wanted to get that stakeholder buy-in that you were expressing, Member Higgins. So we reached out directly to the principals, to the teachers, and we asked them, is that a viable path forward? And what we're gathering is they're saying actually seven periods would be the the route to go if we were to go the route. So the question is, um, do we make that change and move forward with the academies? Or is this the time to stick to status quo and to maybe revisit it when conditions change? That choice is the board's and the board's alone.
Member Lessons, and then Member Bellamy.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I do have a couple of questions, but first wanted to share me whether the questions is rooted in a direct conversation, a candid conversation I had with one of the Big Eight principals, um, who insisted that it would not be possible to implement the academies with any fewer F T E, which begs the question, if you have an additional need for five million dollars and forty-something teachers, are we holding nine through twelve harmless and shifting an entire sixty-four to eighty-four million dollar a deficit to K through eight?
And Member Lessons, again, the the task that I provided Mr. Backman and Mr. Prince was to speak with the teachers. So your question, I think, is more directed to the eight of us.
That is, that is a question I'm putting out there because I'm taking the ball that a principal gave to me and and airing it, that that person insisted they could not implement the academies with any fewer F T E than they currently have. Um, so that piggybacks on Member Higgins sort of questions about where the money comes from. Um, I'd like to maybe focus then on if we were to move forward with adopting a seven period schedule for next year. Could you talk to us about what that means for the class of twenty twenty-eight? Who went, who are in FACE classes right now, who um need to make up some graduation requirements that maybe they didn't get a chance to take this year because of the FACE course? So how do they graduate on time? And take C T E courses to fill up years uh sophomore, junior, and senior year?
Right, so the question of graduation requirements is an important one, one that we haven't addressed tonight, and that, you know, that the answer to that question really follows adoption of a schedule. Um, for example, if we adopt a five of seven schedule, the graduation requirements discussion is quite different than if we adopt a a six of eight, right? As a number of members of the tactic team pointed out, if we adopt six of eight, students are going to have the opportunity to take so many classes. They will meet their graduation requirements by junior year. And they will, they'll they'll leave high school early, so we would have to increase graduation requirements. Uh, the five of seven um creates a couple of opportunities for us, and if we move forward with that option, I think part of the tactic team work or potentially a different tactic team will work on graduation requirements. As for the current freshman class, uh, we're working on rolling out new C T E curriculum. Um, we're on pace and scheduled to adopt that curriculum for next year. Those students will sign up for courses. Um, if it's with the seven period schedule, everyone can appreciate based on tonight's presentation. They'll have room in their schedule to sign up for the Career Academy class of their choice, tenth grade, and have all the course offerings they they continue to have. Um, if it's a six period schedule, we're going to, we're going to have a real challenge. Um, and that is, as I perceive it, uh, significant limitation of their ability to make choices within the schedule, which is something we strongly value in A S D. Um, we see the value of C T E based on the evidence that was provided tonight, and there's more. Um, so we're committed to providing that option if at all possible.
I guess this leaves me wanting to know more. Um, I guess specifically, I was thinking about the requirement that they take a social studies elective, which has been kind of set to the side, I think, with the district's understanding. They'll make it up some point in the future.
Right.
I don't see how they're going to make it up at some point in the future under a seven period schedule that is filled with C T E coursework.
That's great, and I I'll go so far as to say that the consideration of of the FACE class this year um and where it stands in relation to graduation requirements is under consideration right now. It's something we're talking about. Um, and I don't want to overstep. Um, but please know that's a consideration. We're aware of it. And I think the outcome of of the adoption of schedule um relates directly to how we're going to respond to that, the current freshmen and their ability to meet the social studies requirement.
So if I, I'm just going to ask one more. So just to pin this down, if a parent comes up to me anywhere in town in the grocery store, at a park, uh, at a community council meeting, I can say, I don't know yet.
Yeah, I would say you don't know yet, and A S D really values all of its students and are going to work hard to make sure that they're they have the opportunities to meet their graduation. to make sure that they're, they have the opportunities to meet their graduation requirements. That's their highest goal.
Member Bellamy.
Thank you. I did have that question, the graduation requirement question. So you got, I'll just wait to get that answered. So seven-period days, old middle school me. We dealt with seven-period schedules, and they are amazing. I don't quite understand the resistance, although I can understand people having questions. When we moved to middle school from a traditional junior high school, seven-period schedule was our saving grace. Our kids were able to experience more. They had greater opportunities. And so I'm transferring that into the AOA mindset or the the plan. So I don't, I'm a little hesitant with the eight periods. So I'm glad to see that the survey results came back more favoring a seven-period schedule. Because our kids, our middle school kids, some of them, they're used to it. I mean, that's what we use, that's what we did. In terms of, the the biggest question I get is not about a social studies class, how are you going to make it up? But the graduation requirement piece is, the biggest question I get is how are we going to pay for? I mean, how are we going, can we afford the staff? And looking at the staffing by school, it's going to be a $5 million investment over and above what we've already invested. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And so that's something that the board is going to have to have to talk about. I think, I did hear you say that the seven-period schedule survey results, it's, you know, that was the, you know, the the best, the most votes, votes, I guess.
Yes.
So what about, so in turn, what do we need to do? I I don't understand, remember Higgins' question was about buy-in. I mean, when a district makes a change, I don't know that we got teacher buy-in for our, to deliver the the curriculum. I think we gave them the the support and the skills that they may need to teach differently. And so I would, I would think that that would be part of the conversation. If we do move to a whatever kind of schedule away from a six-period schedule, we would provide supports to principals and to, when they're building that master schedule, because it's a beast. It is a beast. You guys did really good with your little models here, but it's a beast. So how, I I think the question, my question is, how do, what is the plan in 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 getting teachers ready for this new schedule? I think that's the overriding question. What do teachers think they need? And then how do we give it to them in a way, we can do some through PLC? Believe what you want about PLC, but that's a pot of time where we can give people some resource to do what it is we need to have them do. So I, so I I guess, and I think you did say every high school principal, Big Eight principal was on the task on on the committee. What were, what were the principals' biggest, I mean, were they free to speak? Were they, I mean, did they share concerns? So I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we balance all of this? Because if if the board decides to go with the academies, then we have to understand that resource is going to be needed at different levels. And we can't just keep coming back with, oh, well, this one said this and this one said that. I mean, I don't, because I I don't, I just don't understand that.
Member Bellamy, I'd love to take a swing at this one. And 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 really, to everyone on the board, I I think to answer many of the questions, Member Higgins had a good one, and I I've heard several others. I I think it's really important when we think about what what teachers need. I remember being a teacher at Bartlett High School many years ago when we decided to to break away from our rolling block schedule, where Bartlett was the last high school that really had a rotating block schedule that was four classes a day. And it would rotate 1245, 2356, 3164, so that your classes that met after lunch switched. And then if we had a traditional snow day, it didn't matter. It just kept rolling. And I just think of our curriculum principal trying to work his angle and and manage this 27 different algorithms to have that schedule put in place. Fast forward later, we did adopt the schedule that all comprehensive high schools are on right now, which is a bookended block. So we meet all of our classes on Mondays and Fridays, and then we have a rotating block that now all schools, within the last two years, are on on board. And I remember hearing the conversations of my peers when I was the principal of the two schools that were still on a six-period day. And how are we ever going to get the teachers to adjust? And what are we going to need to get them to get used to teach you on a block? And I I think really what what teachers need and a lot of us need in the community is certainty. We we need to be assured that when we adopt a plan, that we're going to, in good faith, make all the efforts moving forward. Be that as it may, that we have things that are outside of our control, like the legislator and and how our governor is going to work towards education. What what really helps people solidify themselves is that they know that they can trust a process moving forward. So if we say that we are going to a seven-period day, the sooner we can say that with certainty, the sooner our very pragmatic educators in this district will start creating plans to make it successful. Because they know, as Mr. Backman pointed out, the next school year is going to come. Right? And they are planners. If anyone knows educators, they know without a doubt in their mind, they are already planning. And they get the most nervous and irritated when they have that uncertainty of knowing what's coming. So if you were to ask me personally what we could do, is be certain, make a decision, and move forward with it. This is the recommendation that we have, is a seven-period day. And the sooner we can come to consensus on that, the best we can equip our educators to do what's right by students.
I was just going to add one thing very quickly. One of the the great outcomes of the academy's work has been the development of our tactic teams. And I I would just say, to add on to what Mr. Prince said, you know, you continue use of 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 the tactic team model. You have the principals involved. You have AEA members involved. We create a set of norms that allow for really honest conversation and problem-solving together. So those questions, those concerns, that skepticism has a place to be aired in a healthy manner, and we work together to address it. And making sure that the teachers know they have representatives on that committee who are voicing their concerns.
I I wanted to add a couple of questions of my own. One is dropping way back. When we use the term post-secondary, is that strictly the community college, higher education, including military?
For the data we looked at, it's four-year colleges, two-year colleges, and vocational schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
And military apprenticeships?
Not apprenticeships, military enrollment, certainly.
The other thing was, a key part of that survey was the free-form responses. Is there a summary of what people actually wrote in the little box that was at the very end? Or do we have access, does the board have access to that data also?
We could work to provide that. It's 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 an immense set of text. Yeah, so.
I I think just being able to scan that would be a, would be a great thing.
And Mr. Beckman, can you confirm, slide 21, was that a synthesis of the free response comments?
That's a synthesis of the open response comments.
Got it. Yeah.
Just remember, Member Holam, you know, over 3,000 free-answer responses could take a little bit of time to sit down and read, so.
We get emails.
Yeah.
We are at the limit, or we're slightly past the limit. And of course, we still got questions. Let's, let's go a few more minutes and try to wrap up. Member Donnelly has not asked a question, so I want to recognize him. And then Member Lessons.
Yeah, I've got quite a few questions. I don't think it's time to wrap up yet at all. The main, some of the main concerns I've heard from the public, number one, I have a strong affinity with, and that's the last lack of, the loss of instructional hours. Another concern was that the survey didn't ask the question of how many of the folks would just prefer to stay with the status quo. The response that I heard, I think you used the word disingenuous three times during your testimony. Could you very clearly explain to the public why it was, quote, disingenuous to have an option to stay at six periods?
I'll do my best. Yeah, so the district has been working very hard to support the development of the academies of Anchorage, including the board's adoption of the master plan. To enact the master plan, we need an expanded schedule. And the reason for that is so that we can include CTE classes for all students, in addition to providing the same academic choice that students currently have. On top of that, we want to make sure that our educators, our teachers, have additional collaboration time and planning time embedded in the schedule. So to put out a survey that asks teachers if they prefer the current schedule, knowing that the current schedule is inconsistent with the goals of the academies of Anchorage, which have been our focus in our work for the last two years, I believe that's disingenuous. I'm imagining being a teacher myself, marking that I would like the schedule to remain the same, only to find out that the schedule's going to change. I would feel like I was given a a raw bill of goods, that I was led to believe something that wasn't actually true. I hope that helps.
Well, that helps a little bit. The problem with that is it seems like it's the tail wagging the dog. Well, this is our goal, more planning time, so we're not going to let you even argue for more instructional time. I don't think that's appropriate. I think that we ought to be open to the argument for more instructional time and not just dismiss it. And speaking of dismissing it, the argument was, you put forth the proposition that and you did it a little bit, I don't want to say, you know, this is your quote, represent that there's no correlation between instructional time and academic success. And I find that very difficult to believe. I, and I can give you a proposition. If you had an excellent teacher, would not students benefit from more instructional hours from that teacher?
I I think you bring up a good point, Member Donnelly. I, again, at the risk, Mr. Higgins of aging myself, might want to reflect back in the time when we developed a thing called the GED, where we had the high school equivalency exam. And it was a shortened truncated course that after World War II, we were able to actually provide people an opportunity to get a high school diploma or the equivalency of it in, I believe, six to eight weeks. It started economists looking at this idea of why are we having a four-year high school experience when we can accomplish the very same thing in a much shorter time period? And I think it would be hard to argue that a high school experience today would be the same as a GED. So I don't think adding more or less really gets at the heart of what quality is when we talk about quantity or instructional minutes.
And and I think that's true, that there may not be a direct correlation. You had all incompetent instructors to the number of hours that were provided to our students. But there's a variable in the amount of the quality of the instruction that's available throughout our classrooms. So I think to just summarize it by saying there's no relationship between instructional hours and academic success, I don't think it's accurate. Now, some of the statistics here that were presented as a justification for that proposition were that there were quite a few districts in the lower 48 that had eight-period formats. But my question is, how many of those districts have longer instructional days and more total instructional hours in the year? I bet you're going to find that the, between the two of those, almost every one of them probably has more instructional hours mandated per year.
That may be the case, right? My my intention for providing that data was just to show that other districts had moved in this direction, that it wasn't a novel idea that we wouldn't be the first. And of course, these are large urban school districts like our own, with AP classes and and student supports, credit recovery, and all the rest.
Member Wilson, and then back to the member Wilson.
So I'm looking at the CTE internship and capstone courses, and hoping you could talk a little bit about the importance of the opportunity to take the CTE courses leading up to the capstone courses and the connection between the industry and organizations. So so the opportunity for our students to be more prepared for those internships and and how how those CTE courses can lead to that. Because part of the the academies of Anchorage, part of the the buy-in from industry and organizations is the opportunity for these students to to make those connections earlier on, regardless of of whether or not they're looking to go straight to work or if they're looking to go to post-secondary, get their master's degree, whatever it is that they're they're choosing to do. So maybe if you could share a little bit of 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 that plan and how that connection is going to work.
Sure. Member Wilson, I, if if I'm understanding your question correctly, we're just trying to draw a pretty clear line to show how being involved in these kind of classes can lead you to a more robust understanding of an industry you might be involved with. Okay. So an example I would use is, there's a heavy equipment operator pathway that was tried to be launched at Bartlett High School many years ago, where we had actually collaborated with the 302 Heavy Equipment Operator Union out in the valley, where they have a 160-acre proving ground. And part of that, collaboration with that was, they have a robust apprenticeship program that follows right after high school. But one of the things that they quickly recognized when we were talking with them is that they have a huge list of applicants that want to get a a piece of this, you know, $80,000 apprenticeship program because it provides a really quality job with good wages, a lot of opportunity. And they thought the best thing they could do is to work with a school that would try to get students to go and be a part of their actual proving ground. So they were willing to put two instructors to every four students, and we could have up to like 12 or 14 students at a time that would be taking a similar class their senior year, where they would actually spend part of their day traveling to the valley, getting behind equipment. And because that would be like an ongoing long interview, they gave us the assurances that if they completed successfully the courses that we'd worked together on, that they would actually move their applications to the top of the pile because they knew they had the skills that they were actually looking for, that married very well, or dovetailed, if you will, to use a woodworking term, what people are looking for. And as we plan through our industry pathways, we're hoping to continue to collaborate with those industry partners here locally so that those senior and junior year classes that end up being internships or externships their senior year actually do just that, that they give the student that last second look and the employer, like, are we leading them in the way that we should be leading them? Giving them that, those durable skills, those soft skills, that portrait of a graduate, so that our students, when they graduate, can enter that workforce confidently and with the skills to be doing excellent and and meeting success in life.
So and can you also maybe share, because there are some families that are concerned that the focus of the academies is just, so our students are going straight to work. Can you share an example of maybe a a pathway that allows students to have that connection with industry locally and some of that experience that also is that post-secondary and advanced degree opportunity as well?
Right. Actually, one of our graduates from Bartlett High School, Umi, she is actually in her second year at at Dartmouth right now. She's studying to be a a thoracic surgeon, and she went through our Bartlett Medical Academy. And I I find it kind of ironic, myself, sometimes listening to to testimony or concerns of people about AOA only pushing people to just go straight to work because essentially, when Umi was trying to get a medical academy court at Bartlett and and earn that, you know, Vet Stone had actually done a really great job of building a medical academy at Bartlett and and making it really interesting for students who wanted to be there. And they really wanted to get a medical court so they could distinguish themselves as going into the medical career field when they graduated. And essentially, all they're doing is, if you look at these slides right here on like 25. And essentially, all they're doing is if you look at these slides right here on like twenty-five across, twenty-six across. She was doing just that. She was taking C T E classes. That would be mirrored right now in a in a present day academy of Anchorage in the years to come. And and she found her way to an Ivy League school. She also, while pursuing a medical academy cord, which would be essentially a pathway, was able to take. More A P classes than anybody else in the district. I mean, she. She's a machine. But she had the option, right? She was experiencing something that led itself to a career in technical education while she was in school. And then went on to college to pursue that dream.
The one other thing I would add is. And it's really the beauty of the structure. It allows all the students from a a neighborhood school to attend. Classes within an academy and a pathway together, some pursuing a career. In work, post-graduation, others, the forty-two percent pursuing enrollment and in higher education. And there they are in the same pathway, the same structure. It also allows students who may not see themselves initially as two or four-year college bound on on-ramp. And you can see that in the charts on twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. A student in ninth or tenth grade may not see themselves as a as an A P student. But with this model, they have access to those classes in a in a cohesive and thematic way.
It's also, um, in some recent visits. To to districts that actually model the academies of Anchorage or what we're trying to aspire to be. We saw teacher groups collaborating in academies where they were discussing. Their curriculum and it was really powerful to see those educators talking about. Uh, the idea because this was like a film area. And so the science teacher is talking very clearly of the science of aperture as it might be used in in cameras. And then you could see where different subjects would then weigh in on how that theme was going to be something they were working through. And I know having taught in the humanities interdisciplinary program. When I was a teacher at Bartlett High School, where the things that we read about were the things that we talked about in Socratic Seminar, which are the things that we wrote. It gives the whole student a picture, right? It covers the thematic lens of what we're doing. So. If you can have teachers collaborating with each other to make assignments robust and meaningful. And then make those connections for the student, they're gonna be far more engaged.
And go to member lessons, member Jacobs, and then we are gonna have to break.
I'll I'll try to be brief. Um, so we have different classes, you know, already in, uh, high school. And I mentioned the class of twenty twenty-eight who are freshmen, um, going. Forward in time, class of twenty twenty-seven are current sophomores, class of twenty twenty-six are current juniors, next year's. Juniors and seniors, twenty-six and twenty-seven. How would they use their time in a seven-period course? Because my understanding is that this year A S D is working on developing sophomore. Courses, courses to be rolled out for the class of twenty-eight. How does that leave? Our older students, half of next year's high school population in a seven-period schedule?
We might both have something to say here. Yeah, I I would lead with, it's gonna give them an additional choice to enhance their transcript. I think first and foremost for those students who are trying to be competitive to go to a four-year college. It's gonna allow them the opportunity to expand their their transcript either with C T E existing. Uh, or perhaps an additional A P or I V class.
It might also lend that student who, um, like myself before I decided to go on the Marine Corps, was thinking about how I could take one more art class. You know, if I was gonna go as an art student in college. It might, uh, build a more robust portfolio if I actually had an opportunity to take a pottery class, except. In a constricted six-period day, I might only be able to take studio two.
And on the flip side, would it be accurate to say that if I'm struggling, I could recover credits if I'm a junior and senior with the extra spot in my schedule?
Absolutely.
Um, because as you, um, recall, we have a number of students that graduate, um, after, um, twelfth grade that that summer semester after. So we could capture those sooner. So that's another potential benefit.
Well, I would also reference the five-year graduation rate as it compares to the four-year. It goes up seven or eight percent. Just by allowing students access to more opportunities to take those classes they haven't quite passed yet.
Uh, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thanks. I, um, I I'm I'm gonna be quick, um, because I don't know that I have time, space for all the questions I've got right now. I I sent an email, um, to Superintendent Bryant's. Last month with some data points that I would need because I think it's been highlighted a couple of times now that. The vote on the schedule changes is kind of a, I'm a checkpoint for the A O A master plan adoption on the whole. And so, um, a lot of my questions don't relate to the data we've covered today, and I appreciate the nod towards staffing. Since that was addressed specifically before I highlight some of the other areas I'd like more information on. I'll say that I appreciate that we're confident that, uh, Mr. Lang, um, who does great work, um, can continue to keep. Our high schools fully staffed. I'll flag that right now, we don't have every high school F T E staffed and. Uh, we were given data related to resignation rate, um, for A A members earlier this year. After the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we lost thirteen point five percent of our F T E, twenty-two, twenty-three, twelve point five percent. Looks like the number jumped for after the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to a hundred and forty vacancies. Um, I understand that, uh, many of those are a significant number were at elementary schools. I I wonder. Why, what data allows us to be confident that we can recruit high school educators at a rate that we haven't done in years past? Um, given what we know about what teachers value, um, the state surveyed fifteen thousand of them or attempted to survey fifteen thousand of them. And it was salary, benefits, um, workload, a pension and affordable healthcare. And so many of those static variables are gonna remain unchanged next year. And so, um. I really feel like we need to have a good answer for that. I didn't hear one today, um, besides Mr. Lang is really good at his job, which I agree. Uh, but we probably need a bit more. The other items that I flagged for, um, follow-up specifically were wanting to see. A master plan for the five oh seven schedule, if that's what we're doing now, um, in in an effort to really ensure that that's that our staffing estimates are correct. I understand that maybe those aren't done yet. In addition, I was hoping for an update regarding the amendment that the board passed. I might still haven't. To the best of my knowledge, received an update as to what the opt-out process looks like, the form, what a family might engage. Uh, and if they choose to opt out of the academies, I think it's really important. We're gonna want to have that clearly articulated for families before we move forward. And then, um. I think some more information regarding graduation requirements would be helpful. I guess I'll just circle back to between the email I sent on. October fifteenth and the board amendment, um, that this this group passed unanimously. As part of adopting the A O A master plan, a bunch of that information is still outstanding. And so. For me, this was a a great start to the conversation, but between this and the other significant conversation we're having regarding rightsizing. And in addition, the the conversation we're gonna have to have soon about budget. I I don't know how much space we may want to consider adding to continue talking and asking questions. Because I I bet each one of us has another question written down that we didn't have a chance to ask. And so I'm gonna flag that before I stop and. Um, allow us to break and allow staff to retreat to safe quarters and short of fleeing. Thank you.
And I I do hate to end the meeting when there's still questions on the floor. Obviously, there are still a bunch. But we are gonna take a half hour break, uh, before we resume and, uh, have our business meeting at six P M. So work session is adjourned.
Thank you.